This is for all. Can you remain standing for one moment, please? For veterans, first responders, individuals, and families in need? Thank you. Just want to establish the upcoming meetings. The next Board of Trustees meeting, trustee meeting, is scheduled for Monday, January 3, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. Workshop meeting, Monday, January 1, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. I'd like to just do the Fire Department.
January 3, Mayor. You said January 1. January 3.
Oh, I'm sorry. January 3, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. Workshop meeting, Monday, January 31, 2021, at 7:00 p.m.
These are 2022 as well, just so you know.
Oh, 22, okay, good.
Right.
And we're gonna have one then, too. I'd like to start off with the Fire Chief. I know he has somewhere to go. Been here for a while.
Good evening, Bill of the Board. Congratulations, Mr. Curly, Joe, and Frank. Just one item on the agenda for this evening, and that's a resolution to declare the 1992 American France 19 tanker as surplus and then list it for sale.
Okay, good. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan, motion.
I have some questions, actually, but I guess I have to wait till we have a second. Someone get a second?
Need a second? Can I get a second, please?
I'll second it. I had a couple of questions, too.
Very good. No problem. Second, Trustee Hagan. Any opening for questions?
Yeah, so my question is, you want to surplus this vehicle, but I know we have a new truck coming, but I don't think it's been delivered yet. Is that correct?
Correct. But in order to prepare the new truck for delivery, we had to strip all the equipment off the old truck so it can be sent to the dealer for two months.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted to understand. Don't want to leave us without a truck if we don't have the new truck.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's what we.
Okay.
Same question, thank you.
Thank you. It was just, I was just like, wait a second. Why should we be without a truck?
Can I get a vote? We got to say, can I get a vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Albert. Yes, Trustee Corrigan. Yes, Trustee Hagan. This is for, just to sell our extra five.
Yes.
And yes, Trustee Sablin. I vote yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Now, we'd like to, I'm gonna open up a public hearing on local law amending Section 254 Vehicle and Traffic Parking Schedules.
Good evening again, Board. So this was with respect to Chestnut Street. At the last board meeting, there was concern expressed about the loading zone in front of, I forget the number.
23, I think.
Twenty, 25, 27, thank you. Based upon what took place, the proposed local law has the proposed linear feet of where we're going to have established loading zones. But I've spoken with the police chief and with Charles Sawicki and with some board members, and I think that that may be amended. And I would ask the chief and Mr. Sawicki to come up just to discuss that. And I'm not sure of the length or if they know the length to extend it. Would you know, too? Off the top of your head, the number?
I know that what's proposed in the local law to leave is for the two parking spots in front of the Tiger Chef, and I think, I think the board was leaning towards leaving it at three spots to continue with the loading zone. I mean, that would be my recommendation. I believe, by talking with Charles briefly, I believe that would be his recommendation also. The two spots is gonna be far too tight to get any kind of tractor trailer or truck that's, you know, along the length. There's no way of gonna get a tractor trailer for those two spots.
So yes, the distances that Mr. Magrino was speaking about was something that myself and Joe Hunt had gone out. We measured up from Lafayette Avenue down to the loading zone. And then we, so as a result of that, we eliminated one of the parking spaces. So we currently have three. The distances that Mr. Magrino has in front of him indicate two parking spaces. So to increase that, the three, you would need to add at least 20 feet or subtract 20 feet from the distance from Lafayette Avenue. If that makes any sense. You know what I'm saying? So I think it was 167 feet or something from Lafayette.
63 feet in length, starting 163 from Lafayette, so.
Okay.
It would be 143.
Right, right. That'd be approximately 143.
But you're gonna go out and remeasure it?
Pardon me?
You're gonna go out and remeasure it?
I would advise. I would advise remeasuring, yes. Currently, I would approximately be 20 feet for another parking space.
Okay. What I'd like to do now is that we're going to adjourn the public hearing for the next thing so we can, so Mr. Magrino can, you know, adjust the resolution and, I mean, is that okay with everyone here? Fine with that? Make a motion to adjourn it?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Continue it to January 3.
January 3.
During the public hearing.
January 3. January 3, we'll adjourn it to, okay? Okay? Make a motion on that?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Second, Trustee Albert.
Second, Trustee Albert.
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Trustee Sablin, yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes. And Trustee Albert, yes. And Curly votes yes. I guess we'll go to the Police Department?
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Police Department, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Curly and Trustee Hagan on their election of the Board, as well as former trustee Corrigan on her appointment to deputy mayor, and everyone that was appointed to their positions tonight. We look forward to working with you guys in the future. For the update for the Police Department, in the month of November, we responded to 707 calls for service. As you all know, this past Saturday, we hosted, the village hosted its annual holiday parade, which was extremely well-attended. This year had the most parade participants and spectators that I have ever seen since we started hosting this event. It was a, you know, by all accounts, the parade was a big success. On behalf of the Police Department, I'd like to thank the Parade Committee, all the volunteers that helped with the parade, making it a success, the Recreation Department, the DPW, and the Fire Department for all their hard work to make it a safe and fun event for everyone. I'd also like to thank the Sheriff's Department and the Rampell Police Department, as well as the county's fire police for assisting us with traffic control. I also wanted to mention that our annual holiday toy drive is in progress, and we would ask that anyone who's in a position to do so donate an unwrapped toy to the Suffolk Police Department, or follow the link on our Facebook page to an Amazon page that we have set up where you can order directly from that page and donate to the drive. If you order off that Amazon page, the toy will ship directly to us, and you don't even have to come down and drop it off. As everyone knows, the toy drive supplies toys to a lot of children in the area that are less fortunate, that otherwise might not receive any gifts this holiday season without the generosity of all of our donors. As for my agenda items, at a previous board meeting, the board nominated Mr. Khalid Parwanta, he's a retired Spring Valley police officer, to the position of part-time police officer. Since the last, since that meeting, the Rockland County Department of Personnel has cleared him for appointment to the position. At this time, I'm requesting that the board appoint Mr. Parwanta to the vacant position of part-time police officer.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Khalid Parwanta as police officer part-time for Village of Suffolk.
I get a motion. Trustee Albert.
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Trustee Sablin, yes.
Trustee Corrigan?
Yes.
Trustee Albert?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Tell them congratulations when you see them.
My last agenda item is, at this time, I'm requesting that the board appoint Police Officer Michael Cordletta to the vacant detective position at the Police Department.
I'd like to make a motion to assign Police Officer Michael Letta to the vacant detective position for Village of Suffolk. Try to make some motions?
I'll second the motion. Trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Albert, yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes.
Trustee Sablin, yes.
Trustee Hagan, yes.
And I vote yes. And welcome, Mr. Cordletta, detective in Suffolk.
Thank you, everyone. That's all I have.
Thank you. I want to thank you, the Police Department, all the departments, for the parade. That parade was absolutely great. I actually was so lost in the excitement, I didn't realize it was over. I was up at Goodsmarin Hospital, still walking by myself. So I made a statement. Thank you, everyone, okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great job. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Hurry up, this could be overtime. Good luck to you. Kathy, if you don't mind, I'd like to swear, I don't mind doing this here, but Ari, I wanna, I know you got a lot of things to do, you gotta go back home with your wife and kids. Why don't you come on up? We're gonna go, I'm gonna jump to you, okay, sir?
Do me a favor. Left Lafayette Avenue. He's gonna put down the door.
Yes, sir. How we doing, sir?
Doing great. How are you?
Make a presentation. We have a, I guess we have a motion. Do you want to help us with this, Mr. Magrino, please? Just sort of public understand, I'll just interject here. Ari and his family years ago bought the movie theater when, probably when no one else wanted to, okay? They've been a credit to this society. I know him when he was drinking it, drinking in Muggs Pub when he was 21, seven, 21, I mean, okay? I mean, he was, I remember, he was, he's a good young man. Well, he's not a young man anymore. He's a credit to our community, and he wants to make it better. He wants to help enhance the community, huh? And we appreciate that. So he's come here for a special permit because he wants to make it a nice venue with music and, because a single movie theater just doesn't work in society anymore, okay? Most of them went to these big duplex, there are 10 plexes, and he can't be competitive, and he can't survive. But yet, he wants to help the community and stay with us. So we've entertained, we've gone back and forth for weeks into helping him getting something, we can get a noise permit, and to the point where even the trustees, I didn't go, I wasn't here, they went and listened when he had the music banging with music that I don't listen to. A little loud to me, but you couldn't hear it from the outside streets and the neighborhoods. So that's what's in front of you right now. I just want to explain a little bit. Mr. Magrino will even be better than me. Thank you.
Right. So, thank you, Mayor. So the board amended Section 175 of the code, which is noise, as you mentioned, to add a Section H a few months ago, which would permit a theater to apply for an exception to the noise code. So that was passed, and over the past few months, we've been going back and forth with Mr. Ben Moshe with respect to the conditions, with respect to the permit. I presented a proposed resolution to the board. I spoke with Mr. Ben Moshe, and he's in agreement, and it, generally speaking, addresses certain issues. It would allow for certain noises to be exceeded, and if they are, he would be notified, and the Police Department would go, they'll have a contact person if they do not correct it or address it and, you know, turn it down or what have you after the certain hours. Then he could be issued a violation. If there's certain, if there are five violations in a year, it would subject him to penalty. So one of the issues was the timing. So I spoke with him, we had had some back and forth, and we discussed that this exception would apply from 12 noon to 1 a.m. every day. And really, you know, I believe the board has it, but there are several items in there that if he goes beyond it or causes a noise problem beyond those hours, that the board can address it. And as well as the Police Department, there's a, again, the one thing I like, which was actually suggested by him, was that there would be a liaison that they would let us know about, the Police Department, and if there's a noise issue, the Police Department would be able to contact that person to tell them what's going on. So again, I know the board was interested in this so that the theater could operate and grow. And again, as the mayor indicated, the board literally did a field trip on that and, you know, satisfied itself, I think, that it was something that would work. So I have the proposed resolution and permit, which I would, you know, tidy up if the board agrees or approves of this resolution tonight. And again, Mr. Ben Moshe agreed with that timeframe. We had some back and forth on it, but he agreed with it. And listen, there are some, you know, there's some safeguards, but there's also, you know, he's getting the opportunity to operate the theater, and if it becomes an issue, there are some safeguards in there, but you still have to, you know, recognize that it is an exception to the noise permit, so, or the noise ordinance, I should say. But if, you know, the board's willing, that resolution is ready, and again, with those hours put in there.
And just for the record, I'm recusing myself on this matter.
Yes, I've handled exclusively under half of the village.
All right. Do you have the copy? And I know you updated the resolution. Do you have a copy of it?
I don't have a paper copy. I have it here. You want me to read it?
Yeah, 'cause you could read it, and I'll just.
No, that's an older one.
Thirty resolution?
I won't read the entirety of it, but I, so whereas pursuant to Village Code 170, so this would be the motion that I would propose, this resolution. Pursuant to Village Code 175H, the board may authorize exceptions to provisions of Chapter 175 of the Village Code regarding noise. Whereas Ari Bon Moshe, president of Jacca Entertainment Corp., the tenant at 97 Lafayette Theater, and known as Lafayette Theater, and as a member of Abner One Realty, the owner has sought, applied for a permit for the exception from 175.3 of the Village Code. Whereas the village board, having investigated the matter, including a site visit with, during a time when the level of noise in the building was at high level, I'm sorry, it's very small, observing sounds that could be heard outside the building, now therefore, the village board hereby grants to Jacca Entertainment as tenant and Abner One Realty as owner a permit allowing for an exception to provisions of 175.3 of the Village Code under the following terms and conditions. One, said exception shall be permitted from 12 noon through 1 a.m. of the following day, any day of the week. Two, the tenant shall file liaison with the board and with the Suffolk Police Department. And the Police Department may contact the tenant liaison to immediately address any noise disturbance. Three, the provisions of 173.53 shall apply at all of the times. If a noise disturbance occurs after 1 a.m., that would constitute a violation. The permit shall be subject to review, penalty, suspension, and/or revocation. The term violation shall mean a complaint of a valid noise disturbance after 1 a.m. to be documented through a written police report. Should a noise disturbance be made to the village instead of to the Police Department, the village shall advise the Police Department of said complaint and forward the complaint to the applicant within two days. In the event the Police Department documents five or more violations in a calendar year to the condition set forth herein, it will constitute a violation, subject to a civil penalty. I'm skipping a little. In the event the Police Department documents five or more violations relative to the condition set forth, and the board, after a hearing, makes a finding the applicant has violated the terms of the exception in a calendar year, and if there are five more violations, then it will be subject to a penalty, including revocation. And provided the permit is not revoked for the reasons listed above, it may be transferred to future owners, successors and assigns upon consent to the village, upon application for a transfer, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld, including, and that's it, and any successor must agree to and execute a new permit. So those are the conditions. That's the resolution. If somebody's willing to do it, I'd ask for a motion on that.
Okay. Someone like to make a resolution for Jacca Entertainment Corp., the Lafayette Theater, Lafayette Center Noise Permit?
Motion, Trustee Albert.
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Frank?
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Trustee Sablin, yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes.
And Trustee Albert, yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you. And I'll send it to the clerk as well as a permit.
Very good. Appreciate that. Good luck, Gary. Just so the public realizes, he still has a lot of things here. He has to go to the planning board. There's still places he has to do. This is just in reference to that one issue. There's still things he has to, you know, settle out, huh? And I'm sure he, he's followed the law here, and I'm sure he'll follow the law there then. And we appreciate and look forward to this, this great adventure for Suffolk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Kathy. I'm sorry I held you up there, girl.
Evening, Village Board. Congratulations, Mayor Curly. Congratulations, Trustee Hagan. Congratulations, Deputy Mayor Corrigan. Welcome back, Terry, and welcome, Melissa, and to Fred and to Steve. Welcome, welcome back to. So I just want to say, I heard a lot of good things tonight, and for my update, I think it'd probably be appropriate to me, to talk about more updates after we meet and we meet more of the Rec Board members. We look forward to it. Nancy and Elaine and I, from the recreation staff, are always ramping up and looking forward to new things. So we look forward to working with the new board, our new Rec Board members. And to go backwards a little bit, to echo Chief Lachlan's comments about the parade. As a village, we should be really proud of what was accomplished this weekend. The departments in the village worked together tremendously, worked together so well, and we couldn't put something on like this without working so well together. So we were a small part of it. Everybody else was a small part of it, and it came out to this huge, amazing evening. So I thank the board for always the support for these events, and I look forward to working with the, all the art departments on future events. So my update, I think, will be better, will be more appropriate for next meeting. And I look forward to meeting with you, Mayor, and talking more about the events that you're looking forward to.
And I do as well, okay? I'd just like to mention in that thing, besides all the great workers from DPW, Police Department, the karate's back there were fabulous, Pete Karate, his wife and whole thing. You had, had Wilson, I think Glenn Wilson, I think his name is, okay? I know the chief himself was on that committee. I think Clark Osmond was on that committee, and you know who else was on that. I don't, I'm not even sure myself. You know what I mean? These are just names I heard. I want to thank those individuals, those citizens, okay, that come forth time and time again to make Suffolk a better place, okay? And anyone I didn't know your name, I apologize. Next year, I'll have it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Who is that? I'm sorry, what's your name?
Hi, I'm the president of the Capitol Andrew Sheldon Foundation.
Okay, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a public session. Are you here for the public session? Are you involved here? Whenever a public participation, after the grant program goes, then you can speak, okay?
Good evening, Board, and congratulations, Joe, Frank, Melissa, and Mayor Curly. You know, Mayor Curly didn't tell you the full story about throwing the football over here on Washington Avenue. It was tackle football, and it was with the neighborhood kids, and afterwards, we'd go to John Storfer, so. That was 50 years ago, so I don't want to date myself.
I thought it was 20.
20, 20, 20 years.
Fred, you're giving us up quite.
I have basically three items I'd like to talk to you about tonight. First of all, you alluded to the fact of two grants that Senator Reichlin has awarded us, $200,000 for a garbage truck, $50,000 for an ATV vehicle for the Fire Department. So there's a lot of paperwork that's involved with that, and I've been working with his chief of staff, Mandy Fallon. These grants are gonna be administered through DASNY. You've heard me talk about that many times, Dormitory Authority of the State of New York. I submitted the final paperwork to them last week, and once that paperwork is approved, then we're gonna get what's called a grant disbursement agreement. We have to execute that, and then, once we get the okay, then we can go ahead and purchase the vehicles. But it looks like it'd be the spring of next year, 2022, that that will be occurring. So the second one thing I want to talk to you about is West Maple Avenue Sidewalk Project, which is a community development block grant, federal money that goes to the county. Then we apply for the funds, and it has to be within what's designated as a low to moderate income area, according to census tract data within the village. We applied for new sidewalks in the West Ward. The approximate cost of these new sidewalks for the whole program is $350,000. We received two grants, one for 2020 and one for 2021. They just announced them last week. And the 2021 is for $100,000, and the 20, no, excuse me, the 2021 is for $100,000. The 2021 one is for $200,000. Okay? Once again, these grants require a lot of paperwork. Once they've just been acknowledged to you, and it looks like, once we go back and forth with all that, it'll be late summer to the fall of next year where we'll actually be able to do the sidewalks. Lastly, I want to talk about a Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant, which is filed with the EFC. There was a team of people here that worked on it within the DPW, Charles, Danielle, and Mike Genito. It's $532,800 that we've applied for, for resurrecting the water filtration system to help get some harmful contaminants out of it. We should be hearing in the spring about that project, and if the project is actually, goes according to plan, that would be completed in 2023, the spring of 2023. I would be remiss, though, if I didn't single out one person who helped out with this grant tremendously, and that is Mike Genito. Like, several days before the grant was due, I got the booster shot for COVID, and I was flat on my back. I just was unable to really do anything, and he picked up the ball and really ran with it and was able to execute it. So I thank you for bringing that in and helping out, so. And we work really well as a team. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Fred. And thank you, Mr. Genito, also. I'd like to now, I'd like to motion open up the public comment.
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Second, Trustee Albert.
Hagan?
Trustee Hagan.
Trustee Sablin, yes.
Yes, Trustee Corrigan.
Yes, Trustee.
I vote yes. So, young lady, if you'd like to come up to the mic here, please? Just if you get your name and your address, please, for the record. Thank you.
Yes, yes. My name is Carla Hines. I'm the property manager at the Sheldon at Suffolk Station at 92 Blavett Way. The reason I'm here is because of the parking right in front of Tiger Chef, those two spaces. We've had some concerns since the building opened with my residence. Those two parking spaces right at the end of Orangey Avenue, right in front of Tiger Chef, actually are right in front of my driveway going into the building for our garage, for our residence. And so when those big U-Haul trucks park in front of Tiger Chef to unload, my resident blocks their views going in and out of my property. Every day I sit in my office right in the corner, I hear tires squealing, people honking. I get complaints from my residents daily. I have over 1,000 pictures of them blocking my garage entrance, so my residents can't get in and out. And I'm just very concerned, because someone's gonna get hurt. It's daily, from 7 a.m. until 6 p.m. every night. I come to work every morning, and usually I have to wait because those big tractor trucks are blocking my entrance, so I have to sit there and wait, and traffic backs up. I've spoken with so many people about this, and nothing seems to be done. So now I understand that they're adding, they're looking to add another space. The problem isn't that. The problem is, they pull those big tractor trailers up so that the back of the trailer is accessible to their garage. They can take their little forklift and keep taking their supplies. forklift and, and keep taking their supplies in and out. So it doesn't matter if you gave them the whole street, they're still going to block my garage entrance.
Okay, I will, I will just, I'm gonna let the chief come up in a second here, I was there with the chief today, by the way, all right? So, but I like the, so the chief's gonna be the one who's gonna be in charge of this pretty much, you know, because kind of being enforcement, but me and the chief did talk to the gentleman, and there, and so if the chief, I'd rather him explain what he has in mind, what we have in mind.
Everything you're talking about with the law, that's part of the local law that Mr. Marino was presenting earlier, the section between the Tiger Chef and your building is going to be changed to, you know, if the board goes ahead with the local law, no parking, standing, stopping. The way it's posted right now, it's posted as no parking, which means legally they can stop a vehicle there, load and unload. They can't do that in front of your driveway, they're not legally allowed to block your driveway. And I'm familiar with what you're talking about, I've seen some of the pictures, I understand the purpose. So what, what the plan is moving forward is further down Chestnut towards Lafayette, keeping the third spot open, and then the section between the Tiger Chef and your driveway is going to be remarked and posted, no stopping, standing, parking, which will allow us to enforce the trucks actually stopping there. So the intent of that law is to push the trucks back further up Chestnut Street so they're not allowed to go past the Tiger Chef and unload in front of your driveway. That's, I think, the bulk of the intent of that local law that's proposed.
Yeah, well, I hope that works, you know, I'm, I'm very hopeful that that works, but I've had several conversations with the gentleman next door and the people driving these trucks, and their only purpose is to get in and out of there as fast as they can and have the back of their truck right at their entrance, so I don't think that's going to make a difference.
What I would suggest they do in the future is, anytime that, I mean, you shouldn't have to call all the time, and it's, it's an enforcement issue, but anytime that you do see a truck blocking, instead of waiting and submitting the photos, call the police department right away so we can get either parking enforcement or one of our cars over there to do some enforcement, actually some of the drivers.
And I, and I do, I have done that in the past, my husband's a retired police officer, and I don't want to tie up lines with parking issues, but by the time that they have some of this in over, they're long gone. It's usually only 15, 20 minutes.
Yeah, well, we do recognize that, that's, that's a safety concern there, that section, even when they're parked, not in front of your driveway, but in the area right now that's just marked no parking, it's still very hard to see if they're coming out of that driveway. You basically, we've walked it, you basically have to walk into the roadway to see whether it's clear, so you know it's actually, hopefully this changes the, the local law of parking that section, we'll take care of it, and it'll become an enforcement issue.
There's no way they could put a barricade in that last spot to keep them from pulling out into my driveway?
Are you talking about the section that I'm talking about in between?
Um, the last parking space before you enter my driveway?
Yeah, that's not even a parking space.
But that is not.
Correct, right. So that's going to be posted, no parking, standing, stopping. I mean, that would be, I guess, you know, it's something we kind of talked about in the past, barricading that off, you know, I don't know, just re-should put things in the roadway or that, and we've had all these conversations, and the bottom line with this is, that business has grown from a small business that was, you know, delivery here and there, to like you said, constantly, they won't, trucks and that, stopping trucks and trucks around our block, you know, honestly, we don't.
Yeah, someone's going to get killed, it's not a question.
No, we do recognize it, and we are trying to take steps to.
There's a sign up there right now that says, you know, no parking, or whatever, and they just completely ignore that.
They understand, so the problem with that is no parking, they're actually allowed to stop there. No, no parking means you can stop, unload passengers and cargo, so technically they're not violating the law by parking, or it says, by, by boarding, it says, parking. By changing the law to no parking, standing, stopping, they're not allowed to stop there at all.
What about their forklifts? I was told that they're not allowed to use, utilize their forklift to.
On the roadway.
On the roadway, and they do that, that's all they do, because they use that, so.
Again, it's going to come down to an enforcement issue where we're going to have to keep an eye on, we did have a discussion today about that, right, the, the parking enforcement on that roadway, so we do recognize that, and we are going to do a best to mitigate.
And no disrespect whatsoever, but I know that you have better things to do than, you know, parking, or, and it, like I said, it's, it's all day long, 12 hours a day.
We understand, we recognize, we're going to do best with that.
There's no better things to do to take care of the residents, right? And that's why we were there, looking at it, but, but they may have to, they may have to keep, you know, it's the enforcement, you know, luckily with the chief, the lieutenants, they're listening to what you're saying, and I'm sure they'll instruct the, the officers to do what they're, what they will do, what they're supposed to do. I also talked to the owner myself today also, and explained it to him, what had, what, I mean, I had to, you know, to look at the whole situation, and, and it is a problem. And unfortunately, when we build the Sheldon, the other guy was there first, you know, he's there pre-existing non-conforming, he's, or he got his approvals, he's there, fortunately, he's, he's there first. So that's why when I was talking about we have projects and building and why I brought this man on, is, is for reasons like that, so it doesn't happen on other projects we do. That's, I recognize that, but, but it seems he has enough, and we have to, and, and the chief's saying, please call, because we don't want to, we don't want a safety issue, because if that truck is too far up, and the people are looking, they have to come all the way out, they see left or right. So I realize what, what one of your main problems is there, it is dangerous, and we don't want that, we don't want a dangerous situation, so, he's saying, please call, and you know what, the more we.
Come and force parking and draw.
Yeah, but once again, by the time you guys get there, they're, they're already gone, so it's just, and it's, I've talked with him before too, and he's like, hey, can't we just all get along, they'll only be here for a couple minutes? And I'm like, those couple minutes is going to be between life and death if someone getting hit. It's, it's, I brought one of my residents with me that's experienced it, but I have probably 50 residents that are like, we'll be there if we need to, because.
Can something be set up with a camera where we get the license plate of who's parking illegally, wants the stop, no stopping is in position there?
Once we change the law, and they're not allowed to park.
That's what I mean.
That section, I mean, we would have to, we would have to.
I mean, maybe we could post a sign, basically, that this will be enforced by video observation.
It's, it's an enforcement issue, you know.
Right.
You know, once, once the signage goes off, and it's strike right, you know, you need to enforce it, and we need to get them out there.
Yeah.
Once we start the, you know, constant enforcement, we'll handle that.
Yeah, I think if we get like camera there or something, it would be.
And I definitely agree with you, he has outgrown that area, I mean, he, they have big trucks that can't fit there, so they pull across the street going head in into the tunnel, but on the opposite side of the street, slim people coming up out of the tunnel off of Blavett right there, Orange Avenue, can't see around them going the other way. And that's a constant thing, too, I've seen.
That's, that's enforcement also, but the chief is well aware of it, and I, and I promise you, it was a concern of his today as it is to this whole board, and it will be, it will be, once we change this law, we will change this law next month, and he will enforce it. Enforce it means he will ticket when they do it, okay? And if they get a big enough, they keep getting big enough tickets, they'll stop, okay?
Oh, so, okay.
That's, that, those are options in front of us, available to us right now. The cameras just helps them show who's doing it and whether you give a ticket later on it, but, but if you call, I guarantee those cops are coming over, and if chief instructs them to, which they always do their jobs, it'll, 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 it'll help tremendously.
Yes, we have a wonderful department, so I appreciate that, thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your concerns. So, I mean, there's no other comments? Can I get a motion to close the?
Motion, Trustee Alpert. Second, Trustee Salomon.
Frank?
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Yes, Trustee Salomon?
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes.
Trustee Alpert, yes.
And I vote yes. So, young lady, you were the only important issue, so we'll be on it, okay? We have a lot of time for you. Thank you very much, thank you for coming, and don't be afraid to, you know, call, you know, maybe the chief, before he leaves, he'll give you a contact number, you know, at the police station, he's very, he's very proactive, he's very community minded, and we're here to help, okay? I'd like now to go to Department of Public Works, and I hope he talks fast, okay?
Good evening, Board. I'd like to provide the Board an update regarding the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. It is currently substantially complete. First item on my agenda would be requesting authorization for payment of, payment of, application for payment number four, in the amount of $42,525.80 to Mill Electric Company for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project contract 1E.
Okay, I'd like to make a, I'd like, so I'll make a motion to authorize the payment for the payment number four.
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
I second it, Trustee Salomon.
Any, any discussion, Steve? No discussion? Okay, Frank, you vote?
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Trustee Salomon, yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes.
Trustee Alpert, yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you. Requesting authorization for payment of, application for payment number one, in the amount of $5,700 to Mill Electric Company, Inc., for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project contract 2E.
Can I get a motion for application for payment number one?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Frank?
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Trustee Salomon, yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes.
Trustee Alpert, yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you. Requesting authorization for payment of, application for payment number two to Pingarren Deutsch Consulting Engineers, PC, in the amount of $4,149 for the backup power for critical facilities project.
Can I get a motion for application number two?
Motion, Trustee Alpert. Second, Trustee Salomon.
Frankie?
Yes, Trustee Hagan.
So?
Yes, Trustee Corrigan.
Yes, Trustee.
And I vote yes, motion passed.
Thank you. Requesting authorization for payment of, application of payment number two to Pingarren Deutsch Consulting Engineers, PC, in the amount of $6,204 for the hardening of water treatment plant project.
All right, can I get a motion for application number two for $6,204?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Frankie?
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Trustee Sal, Salomon, yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes.
Trustee Alpert, yes.
And I vote yes, motion passed.
Thank you. Requesting authorization for payment application for payment number four to Dubury Engineers for the hardening of water treatment plant and backup power for critical facilities projects, in the amount of $3,918.70.
Can I get a motion for application number four in the amount of $3,918.70?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes.
Trustee Alpert, yes.
And I vote yes, motion passed.
Thank you. Requesting authorization for payment of application number, application payment number four to Capole Services, Inc., in the amount of $175,070.75 for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project contract 1G.
Can I get a motion for application number four for $175,070.75?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second, Trustee Salomon.
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes.
Trustee Alpert, yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. The next item here is the request for authorization to issue a contract for roofing work at the wastewater treatment plant. So the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project contract number two had a bid alternate for the roof work at the control building and the digester building. And the low bidder, the alternate price from the low bidder was $689,000. So we took a look at that, we thought that was a little bit high, and we thought we could do better, and with the Board's approval, we were able to go out for a separate contract. And that separate contract, I'm requesting authorization to award the Village of Suffering Wastewater Treatment Upgrade Project Contract Three. That, again, has the roof replacement for the control building and the digested building to MilCon Construction Corp. in the amount of $397,600.
Can I make a motion for the upgrade to contract number three for $397,600?
Trustee Corrigan.
Second, Trustee Salomon.
Trustee Hagan, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Corrigan, yes.
Trustee Alpert, yes.
And I vote yes, motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, you got to learn to talk a little quicker, Charles.
He's just kidding.
Good evening, Board, congratulations, Mayor Curly and Trustee Corrigan.
Thank you.
And welcome back, Frank, Trustee Frank. I also want to thank Mayor Markounis and Trustee Charles Barone for their past service to the village. All right, so for, before you, we have three resolutions. First one is for myself to attend a New York State GFOA seminar, that's actually already occurred, but since it was in between the meetings, we're asking that you approve it, nunc pro tunc. Okay, I'd like to make a resolution to authorize a treasurer to attend a New York State GFOA seminar?
Motion, Trustee Alpert. Second, Trustee Salomon.
Yes, Trustee Hagan.
Yes, Trustee Salomon.
Yes, Trustee Corrigan.
Yes, Trustee Alpert.
And I vote yes, motion passed. Thank you. For requesting myself to attend the New York State GFOA 2022 Annual Conference in April 6th to 8th in 2022. I'd like to make a resolution, authorize treasurer to attend a New York State GFOA 2022 Annual Conference. Motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Corrigan.
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Yes, Trustee Hagan.
Yes, Trustee Salomon.
Yes, Trustee Corrigan.
Yes, Trustee Alpert.
And I vote yes, motion passed. Thank you. The last resolution is, a resolution amending and closing various capital projects, we've done this in the past, when a project has been completed and we have excess funds, the excess funds are returned to the fund that generated that money, in most cases, it's either the general fund or the sewer fund in these cases, there was one instance where some of that money was, money that was bonded, borrowed, and we have to return that to the debt service fund to pay down the debt. I'd like to make a resolution amending and closing various capital projects.
Motion, Trustee Alpert. Second, Trustee Salomon.
Yes, Trustee Hagan.
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Corrigan.
Yes, Trustee Alpert.
And I vote yes, motion is passed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Genito.
Thanks.
Next, we'll go to attorney, Mr., yes, we can do this one here?
Yeah, we do.
What we got?
The only thing we're going to do is adjourn.
Just, you know, do adjourn the, this one.
You did that.
So, we had a couple things on, Mias Tapbar asked if we could put it off to another meeting, so we won't be doing that, we're going to.
January 3rd, on adjourn to January.
Adjourn to January 3rd on Mias, on Mias Tap, and then also, we are going to adjourn the adopt local law number 2202, 221, to amend chapter 266, we're going to adjourn that to February 7th. That has to do with the Avon project, where they want to put the, on the other side of the law, they want to put about 140 apartments slash condos, and I just, we just need to know a lot more about it before we, we move ahead, and I, and I don't think we're at that, we're at that point, we don't want to end up like parking problems like we just heard the young lady saying at the Sheldon. We need to really think and, and look, look deep, do a deep, deep dive into it, and before we would change that zone, if we even consider changing that zone, and then we have our, our great planning board and zoning boards that would do their work on their ends if, if we ever did, so, it's, it's, it's got a ways to go, so.
You need motions adjourning those.
So, I need a motion to, how do I do it, one at a time? To adjourn the, Mias, by, by, by doing it this way, they don't have to repost it, they have it reposted, so, so, so to, a motion to adjourn the Mias Tapas, I'm going to do them all together, the Mias Tapas, no, they're different dates, the Mias Tapas and Bar Live Entertainment Permit, I'm going to put that over to January 3rd, can I have a motion, please?
Motion, Trustee Alpert.
Second, Trustee Corrigan.
Yes, Trustee Hagan.
Yes, Trustee Salomon.
Yes, Trustee Corrigan.
Yes, Trustee Alpert.
And I vote yes, motion passed. The next one is the resolution adopting local law number 221 to amend chapter 266 law, uh, number 221 to amend chapter 266 to February, uh, 7th of 2022. I have a motion, please?
I so move.
Motion made by?
Trustee Salvin.
Salvin, second by trustee Haggen. Do I have a vote there?
Yes, trustee Alpert, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Salvin?
Yes, trustee Haggen, yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passed. Uh, also, there's a, a resolution, it was on a, the call of the home occupation. We got a letter back from the county, a GML letter, and there were certain requirements that aren't addressed. So we, we, we asked, we, I called them up and said, listen, if you don't wanna come, we need to address these things first. I didn't want them to sit here and, and get aggravated, you might say. So, um, we'll, we'll help them. They filled out what they call a short form instead of a long form. That's what they, was required, so they're gonna fill out the proper paperwork, and then we'll, we'll have it on for next month, okay? So I'll make, I'd like a motion on that, please?
Motion trustee Alpert. Second trustee Salvin.
Yes, trustee Haggen.
Yes, trustee Salvin.
Yes.
Yes, trustee Alpert.
Since we're under the attorney's.
Can I do yes? Can I do yes? Let me say yes for something.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you.
I vote yes. Motion carried. Mr. Rice, like to say something?
Yeah, just, thank you. I appreciate the board voting to confirm the mayor's appointment. I look forward to, uh, working with all of you, and if any of you have any questions at any time, please, uh, feel free to contact me by telephone or email, whatever. Thank you.
And I guess, uh, Mr. McGee, we already passed the Jocka Entertainment Corporation. We already passed that, so we're good there, okay? Uh, like, do, uh, any trustees have anything they'd like to say? Any comments? Frank, why don't you talk about the veterans? Remember you, talk about the veterans, maybe be the veterans more involved with the, with recreation also, because they have a great facility up there. There's, there's great, I'm, I'm actually in the American Legion with Frank, and it's, and it's a great, it's a, you know, it's a great American Legion, and they want to, they wanna work with other people to, to make it even better. So, Kathy, keep that in mind. The American Legion's there. I mean, I know you've worked with them before, but I think they're actually looking for more. They have a lot of energy there. They're, they're drinking that, that youth water up there, and they're, they're ready to go, okay? That's good.
We have, we have monuments. We have, uh, monuments at Memorial Park, monuments here crossing the church. We need more work done. We need plaques put on them. We need upgrades. We need grant money. So we need a committee to help, and I think the mayor's gonna make that part of the, uh, recreation committee. And I'd like this, one volunteer I'm looking right at in the back of the room with his Irish stuff on, I'd like him to be on that committee, if I may say so. Mr. McInerney.
Sure, you're more than welcome. Mr. McInerney's a great man from the VFW there for years. Now, he's participated with the American Legion. The McInerney family has always done volunteer work and great things for this village for many, many, many years. And, uh, I just wanna, I just wanna, uh, give you my condolences. He had a family member pass away recently, and I know you, I kept it quiet, but, uh, you know, our hearts and our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family. And, uh, you know, we, we thank you for everything you do, huh? All your family, huh?
All right, can I add Mayor Markounis to that committee, sir?
Sure.
Okay.
We're gonna put a committee together.
Veterans committee.
Sure. No, we're, we're gonna be doing, uh, the veterans committee with other things, and, you know, being that you're in the American Legion also, Frank suggested your name as re, as well as Mr. McInerney, and there's gonna be other members on it too, to, uh, you know, advance veterans, advance, advance to all people in this village, and we appreciate that. You're welcome, sir. Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, any, any other updates? We'll go with the trustees? Okay.
All good tonight.
All right, so, uh, the update, I pretty much spoke already, so hopefully I run a better meeting even next time, okay? Look forward to working with everyone here, and, uh, and, uh, wish for good times for all of us, all right, and safe, safe holiday season, huh? Um, I'd like to make a resolution to approve the November 8, 221 Board of Trustees meeting minutes.
I so move trustee Salvin.
You, you and I can should stay.
You, me and you can.
Frank, if you watched, I, I actually watched everything, so you, you, if you didn't watch everything, you don't have to, but I, I followed up on it.
We weren't on the board, so I don't think.
Yeah, according to the law, according to the law, they, you're allowed to, so I, I, I will, I actually looked this up beforehand. So, approval of number 8221 Board of Trustees meeting minutes? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. We made the, oh, you made the motion, right? Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I made the motion originally.
Did I get a second on the motion?
Oh, second.
Second by trustee Alpert, okay. Frank?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't.
Insane, okay.
I didn't feel right.
No, 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 that's fine. You're abstaining, that's fine.
I'm not.
I vote yes.
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 And yes.
And I vote yes. Frank? Uh, resolution approval November 15, 221 Board of Trustees Special Meeting Minutes. Uh, can I have a motion on that, please?
Motion trustee Alpert. Second trustee Salvin.
No vote.
Frank abstained, that's good.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. Okay? Um, I don't, I don't know, does the chief or anyone have anything we need to go into executive session for? Nothing? Anyone else? No executive session?
Do we have a meeting this month, uh, with the, with the planner? Like, that was a special meeting last month. Do we have one this month?
You, you guys did that schedule, so whatever that's.
It wasn't on the agenda, that's all the original.
Oh, okay, but that was a separate schedule you did. So whatever that schedule is, we'll adhere.
Third Monday.
If you will, adhere to that schedule, okay?
Third Monday at 6:00.
Okay.
Stop.
So, uh.
Every third Monday at 6:00.
So that's the seventh, uh.
Every third Monday, that's, uh.
The 20th?
20th, I believe, yeah.
Okay, 20th December, right? 7/5 or May?
Six.
Six.
It's by Zoom. It's not in person.
Yes, it's by Zoom. So, yes, it'd be the 20th.
All right, so since there's no executive session, I'll, I'll ask for, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, trustee Corrigan adjourned?
Second trustee Alpert.
Trustee Haggen, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes. Uh, meeting adjourned, and thank you, everyone. Have a safe, safe night. Get home safe.